We're coming today. This is a very, very important time for the city of Roswell in defining our strategic plan going forward. So I really appreciate all of you being here, taking the time out of your workdays and your busy lives to join us for this very important occasion. So I look forward to great work that I know we will accomplish today, and I look forward to the conversations and the banter and the different opinions. And I know at the end of the day, we will come away with something that we can all agree, all agree to move forward. So thank you again, and I will turn it over to our wonderful facilitators.
Okay, let's see. Is this working for me? Yes, it is. Okay. Well, good morning, everybody. Thank you for being here. Jaclyn and I are excited to be actually in person somewhere instead of just Zoom. So we appreciate this. We have an agenda that we think we can accomplish between now and 2:00 because we have -- you have done such good work previously that we're now -- what we, Jaclyn and I feel are, we're in the home stretch. Today, we are going to look at the objectives, and we're going to do a recap real quickly of the October meeting. But you've got your goals, and now we've got objectives. We want to make sure that the wording of the objectives is what you want. And you being council, I want to be clear, because staff is here to help, but it's council, we want to make sure that you're in agreement with the wording of each objective and that it makes sense to you to have it in your five-year strategic plan. So we are going to spend our time doing that. Go ahead and advance it if you would. So we are going to just take a few minutes to review what we did in October, and then we are literally going to go, and we have the sheets in the back. You have, if you have your worksheet with you, it's exactly the same. But literally, we're going to go one objective after the other, and we're either going to agree, yes, it's important, we're keeping it, we all understand what the intent is, or we're not sure if we want to keep it, we need to clarify, or if there's consensus that you don't want it, then we're going to scratch it. Because at the end of today, what we're going to have is the rudiments of the strategic plan. So that's going to be our task. Anything that you decide needs to be further clarified, we will then break out into small groups once we get through all the objectives. And we'll work in small groups to define or clarify the objectives so that they meet your approval. So we will then get back together, report out. It really, it'll all depend on your decisions about what you want to further look at, what you need to do to clarify. And I want to just make sure that staff is here to make sure that they understand. So staff may have questions. If they do, that's fine. Then they'll ask for further clarification. That is really what we need to accomplish between now and 2:00. And we know it can be done, and so we're looking forward to working together on that. So is that, any questions about that? And excuse my back for those of you where I'm in the middle here. Everybody's good with that? Hopefully, you've looked at the workbook. Hopefully, you've thought about anything that you have questions about, that you feel need to be, that needs to be clarified, and this will not be too onerous. But the point is that your staff needs to understand your expectations in order to be able, to be able to carry this out. And so that part is very important. We have had discussions before in previous sessions about clarifying and what do certain words mean, and that's where we are today. So that's our goal. And with that, I'm going to let Jaclyn just recap real quickly. God, October 14th, feels like it was an eternity ago.
It does.
So Jaclyn's going to do that part. Thank you. Well, hello. Good morning. As Amy mentioned, October 14th, in my mind, was a very long time ago. So we thought it was important to just recap briefly with you the work that you did. And in addition to, you know, identifying goals and goal statements and objectives, which is what we're going to focus on today, the objectives, you really came to consensus on a very lovely vision, a mission statement, and then eight organizational values. Those are not in your workbook, and so it was important to us to just refresh your memory with what you decided. And this is your vision, to be a vibrant riverside community connecting strong, safe neighborhoods, preserving our rich history and natural environment, celebrating parks, the arts and culture, and enhancing economic vitality that all are proud to call home. And then your mission statement is pretty much the same as it previously existed. Provide our citizens with responsive, high-quality service in a fiscally sound manner to ensure Roswell continues to be an evolving and vibrant community. And then your eight organizational values, communication, inclusion, innovation, trust, excellence, respect, responsiveness, and transparency. And so, you all remember that? I do, now that I read it again. Thank you. So that's the basis upon which your goals were developed and that your objectives then flow from. And so I think, Amy, we're ready to get started with our work. All right. We've got, I'm not going to bother with this because we're going to go goal by goal, so I don't need to read everything to everybody. Maybe I should be doing this from the middle. So let's start with Goal A, dynamic transportation network that optimizes mobility. So the key objectives, literally, I'm not kidding, we want to go one by one. And we want to know if there are, what I want to know is if this is clear, and if it's not, we will, literally, we will circle it, and we will come back to, and we will then send off a group, a small group, to clarify. But if there's anybody who thinks, well, wait a minute, you know, maybe we should reconsider whether this belongs on a list. Again, I want to emphasize, we're talking about five years, so there's a lot. When you think about a work plan, there's a lot, because there's a lot of services that you provide ongoing basis that are going to be done at the same time. However, these are aspirational, and the objectives can be spread out over that time period. So if they're important, they should stay on the strategic plan. So with that, pursue T-SPLTs Tier One projects. I see shaking of the heads, yes. Is there any, is that clear to everybody? And then when I say clear to everybody, I want council, I want, if staff has any questions about that, this is the time to raise them so that it's, that you all understand the expectation. Okay. So we're going to move on unless you tell me otherwise. Second one, identify key projects and develop a strategy. Mayor, please.
This council hasn't decided yet, but we are approaching T-SPLS Two that Fulton County is pursuing. So we will be discussing that within the next couple of weeks to the next couple of months, whether or not we'll support a T-SPLS Two, what that timeframe looks like, what the projects are. So I don't know if, should that be included in this bullet point?
Well, the second bullet, the second bullet point, then, is the T-SPLTs Two.
Oh, okay. Great. Thank you, sir.
So that's fine. We're there. We can, so, but you raise a good question. I think, because you haven't decided it yet, I think it's, I think it's worth keeping it on right now. And if you decide as a council that you're not going in that direction, then it can be removed. I mean, basically, what's going to happen is, I should, let me just preview. After today, we will take everything that you agree on, and we're going to put it in a strategic plan document that will then come to you. And probably within, well, let's see, today's the seventh. I think we will have it done by the end of the month. I don't know that it'll get to you at the end of the month because of the posting and all that, but soon. So if there's something in between, I would say leave it on the list for now, and then if you decide that you, if it's important and you'll be discussing it, you can always remove it before you adopt the actual plan. And so, and really, this is a living document. Because you say something today, it's, what you don't want to do is just wave a wand and say, okay, yeah, 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 we're going to do this, and then not intend. I mean, the intention should be there, but if you're going to be discussing this, whatever it might be, then yeah, leave it on for now, and if it's, if it's important later to change it, then you've got that prerogative. What we don't want to do is put a bunch of things on objectives that you really don't intend to do, but for now, we're going to leave it on. So, I mean, they should be serious, but I think your point is, yes, it should, that should stay. And that's the one, that's the second in here, right? Okay. All right. So then we are going to leave the second in. So third is implement key elements of the 2019 Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan. Well, that sounds pretty clear. Any questions or comments about that?
I have a question.
Please. Christine, yeah, you'll turn on your mic.
Are we going to identify the key elements, or are they underlined somewhere so that we know what the key elements are?
So after you adopt the strategic plan, then your staff will develop an implementation action plan. And in that case, the key elements will come to you. Well, Gary, do you want to talk about this? Because, I mean, okay.
I'll defer to Mohammed on the specifics of the plan. I'm assuming I haven't looked at it in a while, that those key elements are listed within a portion of that plan?
Yes, yes. So the plan is adopted already, that's the Bike Pad Master Plan, and it laid out, you know, some timings and funding and some projects. So it's ready.
So Christine, is that, I know, obviously, we don't have the plan today right now for you to be able to look at it, but apparently, so council adopted it already. So this is really just the, to show that you intend to implement. Is that okay? Okay. Okay. So next is determine needs and prioritize funding for citywide intersection improvements. So this is pretty broad. Again, so these objectives will come back to council. Good morning. You are straight over there with the only seat with the mic that's not occupied. And we are just reviewing the objectives. Michael, each objective to make sure that the wording is clear and that there's a consensus that it stays on the list. If the wording's not clear, we're going to break into small groups after, after we get through all of these, and then work on the wording or decide. And we are right now, I don't know if you have your workbook with you, but we're on item number four under Goal A, which is determine needs and prioritize funding for citywide intersection improvements. Any discussion about that? Okay. Proactively, next is proactively pursue relationships with Georgia Department of Transportation and other regional partners to improve mobility. I should have each of you be reading these because I don't want to be talking the whole time. All right. Next is prioritize funding for road resurfacing and maintenance. And then last, under A, is pursue smart cities initiatives through Georgia Tech's Smart City Division and other nationally recognized organizations. Comments? That's pretty clear, too. Please. Marie?
Thank you. I think all of these look great. One of the, one point that we talked about in our small group when we had a breakout discussion was the idea, as far as transportation projects, is prioritizing human-focused design and aesthetics in transportation design, you know, so that it's not merely functional, but also, you know, user-friendly and a positive experience and, you know, reflects the community.
So is that an objective or is that an overarching principle?
I think we briefly tucked, addresses it in the overall statement, but I think as far as when we are looking at these plans, that it needs to be a priority, something that is top of mind in the planning and budgeting for individual projects.
So how would you, is it, well, you say, as long as it's reflected in the goal statement, is there something else, I guess, that you're suggesting that gets added? I'm not sure what you're thinking about in terms of addressing it. It would be, it sounds like it's an overarching principle for all the transportation, for this whole goal, right?
Correct.
Well, then the question is if the goal statement, which I've got to go look at that goal statement, if you, if you want to open up that to change it somehow, or, let's, let's look at the goal statement again. That says, provide a people-focused innovation, innovative, multimodal transportation system that is compatible with regional plans based on industry best practices and standards that work efficiently and safely while being accessible, reliable, and constructed with priority to our community and sensitivity to the environment. So I think it does, is it need to, does it need to be even stronger? Because it does sound, it sounds like what you were.
I think so, yes. Yeah. I mean, I think there needs to be something in there about focusing on, you know, user-friendly transportation design and aesthetics and landscaping and things like that in all the projects, not just, not just a means of transportation and functionality, but also a focus on the citizen experience in the transportation system.
All right. So maybe what we'll do is, so the key words are, you said, user-friendly, the human experience.
Right.
So maybe what we'll do is, in a small group, we'll go back and, and ask people to try to incorporate some of those elements, and you can be part of that discussion for sure.
Great.
All right. And it sounds like the rest of the key objectives, though. Marcella, go ahead.
Thank you. So since you just read the goal statement, I would like to suggest to add on the last part of the statement, reliable and constructed with priority to our community, neighborhoods, and sensitivity to the environment.
Okay. So your suggestion is to add neighborhoods will include, Jaclyn, you're going to put that in where the suggestion was between community, right after community, the word neighborhoods.
Right.
And then as that group works on the goal statement, we'll consider that changed, too. Michael, go ahead.
Thank you. So I remember in our last session, we spent a good amount of time talking about the goal statement, and I'm fine with these tweaks, I'm indifferent on them. But if you recall, if my memory serves correctly, I was really focused and wanted to make sure we put, you know, priority to our community, because before it had that, I was concerned that just basically it looked like it was for our region and not just the Roswell residents. So I, and for that reason, because we were able to get that tweak, and there was, there was support and willingness to add priority to community, that's what made me happy with the goal statement. My concern is, as I look at key objectives, there's nothing that's really addressing that. As I see all these things, you could argue, all right, these are good technical items, but I just get the concern of, well, what happens if some of these key objectives are not the best for our community and for our neighborhoods and our residents? That's, that's where I feel like we should think about, how do we have a key objective that makes sure this council and future councils are all very focused on really the residents and how it's affecting Roswell? Does that make sense?
Yeah, I understand what you're saying. I guess the question is, is there something that you want to propose as a key objective? Or again, it's, it kind of sounds like it's the overarching sentiment, and certainly if you, if the rest of the council agrees on adding the word neighborhoods, you've got community and neighborhoods, that would, the overarching sentiment would be that it's going to be whatever your objectives are. But if there's something specific that you feel is important to add, then let's consider it. I mean, is there something missing that would get to that point? Or it sounds like really that you're saying every one of these should be, the goal statement should be consideration in every one of the key objectives as it's, as it's being implemented.
And that, that makes sense. I guess just my concern is what I would not want to make, what I would not want to happen is the goal statement is seen as kind of fluff, and, and then, you know, future staff or whomever is looking purely at key objectives. I just want to make, yeah, my focus is just, how do we be 100% positive that as we look at all of our key objectives, that we do all of this, we make sure we have that priority of our community and the people of Roswell?
Well, I think it's important that you, that that's why staff is here today, so that, that's something that, and I don't want to just pin it on Mohammed, because others will be involved in this, but everybody hears this concern and the issue. It's, I would say that the goal statement should not just be fluff, that it really is, I mean, that, everybody knows, especially in here, that how hard it's been to get there. I don't want to say hard, but how much work has been put in to get there. And so I think that as these, as the objectives start to be implemented, that that will certainly be something that people keep in mind and actually may emphasize as there, as things are coming to you in staff reports, it may be that there's a mention about how it benefits the community, how it benefits the neighborhood, whatever it may be, not just the region. So I know everybody here is paying attention, and I think that that's a way to help ensure that. So is that, does that, will that be okay, then?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I agree with Mike's, you know, the spirit in that I think that that idea needs to be actually an objective, that's kind of a top of mind as we consider each of these things.
So is there, perhaps, and think about that when we're going into small groups, what you might want to do about that.
How we position that, sure.
Marcella, did you have something?
Yeah, just adding up, maybe, you know, we can call it fundamental objective statement. Fundamental objective statement is what is the most important. Then the other one, kind of like key operational objective, because the other one is operational implementation. But then the statement, and I agree with Councilmember Palermo, that we don't want to get lost this and just focus on key objective and forget about the goal statement. But if we call it like key or objective, main objective statement or something like that, so everybody knows that you have to start there, then the rest will follow. So I think that we need to add something there.
Please, Matt, Matt J.
I think this is what last session was for. We're overthinking this now, and we're getting way in the weeds. I think we need to stick with these objectives. If we need to add objectives, great, but if we continue this on every, we'll never get anything done today. So we probably need to move on and get what we did last session clarified here.
Okay. Well, I think that we're good on this one, anyway. Marcella?
Yeah, just want to remind that seeing that we are on the third workshop.
Right.
So eventually, we need to get to the weeds. If we keep going 30 miles above on the sky, then eventually, we need to, I don't know if we're going to have 10 workshops.
Well, this is it.
Right. So I think it's getting time to get into the weeds, except that we're going to have another 10 workshop in the future.
Go ahead, Matt.
Councilman Zapata, respectfully, we got into the weeds last time, you were not here. We're in the, we're trying to clarify what we are doing from last session to this session.
Well, I think we, I hope that we can, we can move fairly quickly and then get to the point where we are breaking into smaller groups if we need to, but.
Just a clarification, seems like we didn't get it much in the weeds on the last meeting because there's still concerns here from several council members.
Well, we need to hear what, what changes you want to have considered, for sure. So we're going to plod on ahead. We heard issues about Goal A, I think we can move on to Goal B, and when we get into the small groups, hopefully, people will be able to resolve these fairly quickly. Gary?
Amy, I just want to, if, if the council has other objectives they would like to offer as well, we should talk about those.
Yeah, absolutely. Are there other, yes, before we move on, actually, good point, are there other objectives that you want to add? Matt?
I think that putting as an objective, starting and finishing projects on time and on budget while communicating progress to the community would be a good key objective because that, obviously, everything we start, finish, and communicate would be very helpful.
Okay. We'll get that on for consideration. Christine?
Perhaps we can nail this down in the small group, but the objective to add would be to prioritize the citizens and neighborhoods in any transportation project, just upfront.
Okay. So, so you're suggesting an objective that would be really, would get to Marie's issue and Michael's issue in terms of just add, instead of having it part of the goal, actually add it as an objective?
In addition to part of the goal, you can have a metric and basically grade it and say, does this benefit the citizens, neighborhoods, and score it?
Okay. All right. Generally, I do want to say, generally, your objectives, well, we'll, we'll just go with that, that's fine. We'll put it up there, and the small group can make sure that they're in line with that, and then we'll bring it back to the large group. Anything else that you want to suggest in terms of additions? Okay. Then let's go on to B, economic vitality and sustainability. I will advance this, although you've all got it. Okay. So first off, review, update, and promulgate redevelopment incentives to directly support quality development and redevelopment initiatives. All right. Second is explore tax allocation districts, community improvement, district expansion, and other best practices to incentivize development. How's that? Three is hire an economic development director. Four is define future tax receipt needs by type. So we have a note that says this needs to be explained.
I'll make a comment on that, Amy. When the executive team got together, we just weren't, we weren't sure what this meant, so we just put that in parentheses so we could talk about it today.
So should we go into a small group for this one to be explained, or do some of you want to speak now about, to help staff on this? Please, Christine.
I think we were discussing identifying an ideal percentage of tax base, commercial receipts versus residential receipts, sales tax, different types of receipts as a model.
So, so projecting what the needs might be by the various types, is that what, is that what you're thinking?
Right. To develop a model that the city can, can hold and say, you know, if we have this type of model, this is the kind of services that we can provide and tax base for our residents versus this type of model.
So maybe instead of define, maybe change the wording to say, develop a model to show the impacts of future tax receipt, receipts by type? Is that, clarify it?
Yeah, I welcome other council members to opine.
I just actually have a question. I just want to make sure I completely understand. Is it, so is this item specifically on the discussion that we've had in the past, which is coming up with a, with a goal ratio of, of commercial tax revenue compared to revenue, compared to resident, resident tax revenue? Is that, I just want to make sure I understand completely.
I think it would be very wise for us to have something like that as a city so that we know where we want to go.
So your model would show, we do a lot of modeling at, at our firm, a model shows what happens if, when one, you know, when one source of revenue goes down, what else, what you need, what the implications are. So, so really, it sounds like. So really, it sounds like the objective is a model, a dynamic model, so that you can see what happens as different revenue sources change. Is that, does that meet people's, well, let's go ahead and put it on there and...
For clarity, the way it sounds to me, though, it's not necessarily when it changes. I see it as more of a, of a goal to strive towards. So, because as I think about it, you know, there's a big comparison, you know, if we look at Alpharetta, obviously, they have a, they have a ratio that's high on the commercial side, low on the residential side. If I remember correctly, Sandy Springs is the opposite. Sandy Springs, I believe, has a high resident one ratio compared to commercial. And so I would think it's coming up with what do we feel is the right one for Roswell? Is that, is that fair to say?
Agreed.
Okay, so can you help us with the phrasing then, Michael? What would you want to propose?
I think Councilmember Wills, he always articulates.
My suggestion would just be to, something like model, project, and define future tax receipt needs.
A little bit louder, model, project.
Model, project, and, and define future tax receipt needs. And maybe even defines not the right word, but just try to, I mean, how do we get there? I think that's the challenge.
So model, project, and maybe it's determine a goal of the various revenue types. I mean, I think if you're, what you're all saying, at least those that have spoken, is about, is actually having some type of a goal.
Because that's, because I think that's the big thing, coming up with a goal. And for me, I much prefer saying goal versus, or balance versus needs because I'm just concerned some, when they hear needs, they might be thinking, oh, this is just an interest of spending or something along those lines. It's really just coming up with the right balance and what's our, what's our goal balance?
Okay, so the word balance might be in there too then, to balance revenue type. Well, so, all right, so Jaclyn's marking down the types of things that you're discussing. And when you get into that small group, you can define that a little bit better, but, or just clarify it. But at least we're getting an idea about what it is that you're hoping to do. Anybody else want to have anything on this one? Okay. Mayor, did you want to say something? No, you're just adjusting masks. Okay. Then next is identify, analyze, and implement key strategies in the Strategic Economic Development Plan 2.0. Okay. All right, then develop a film-ready strategic plan. That actually sounds like fun. Till they block your streets. That's not fun. Okay, how about identify, analyze, and pursue public-private partnership opportunities? And you can see the, the types of things that were included. Shared stormwater, shared city services, city facilities, and capital projects, public safety training partnerships. And last in this goal is conduct proactive and targeted marketing of the city to select, to, to select developers and retailers. I think it's not selecting. I think it's select, select, yeah, yeah. Okay, so are there any other objectives that you want to have considered? Please?
So I have one additional objective, but also one clarification. So I do understand now when Mr. Palmer mentions what was meant by select. I'd still prefer to see just a more clear word because when I read it, it made it sound to me like it was specific developers. So that's where I was thinking, changing it to select types of developers, but, or it could just be something instead of just, just select, but just make, just making sure that no one in the public is thinking we're, we're marketing to just individual developers.
Yeah, all right, so we're circling that and that's the small group that's working on that.
Perfect. And then my, my other one is, and we've seen Milton and Alpharetta be really successful in this, is something along the lines of define focus areas and industries for economic development. And my thought process there is twofold. One, we can't be everything to everyone. And so I feel, I feel we can line up an economic development director to be more successful if, if they are seeing what the community sees as success. And separately, if we're not seeing focus areas, then it really means there's no, there's no definition of success because hypothetically, if an economic development director comes in and they end up bringing in 100 used car dealerships or pawn shops, I'm not convinced that most Roswell residents would see that as a big economic development win. But if we didn't define it, then, then why, then, then basically I feel we haven't done our job. So that's what I mean by industries, looking at target wants, just very similar to how Milton and Alpharetta does. And then separately, and what I meant by areas, if we feel we have specific underdeveloped areas that we really want to just encourage it, that's something that I feel like we should specifically be defining as well so the economic development director is, is aware and there's just a clear community focus on that. So that's, that's an additional objective I think we should add.
Okay, Jaclyn, you caught that? Okay. Marie, did you, were you, did you want to say something?
Just to add on to that, I think a lot of that is in the SEDP, the Strategic Economic Development Plan. So some of that might come out of, again, what that says, identifying and implementing those strategies. I believe there's a focus on healthcare and technology and small business, so.
So I, I completely feel the, so I definitely feel the SEDP is what we use to help define it. But I still feel it should be a separate objective. So I feel like we identify, analyze, and implement the strategies, but I still just see it as separately, we're, we're just having that clear definition of here's an objective. We need to make sure we did it. We can't just have it hidden within the SEDP. That's kind of my thought process. But I do think that will be helpful for it.
Okay, Marcelo?
So on the last, on the last, conduct proactive and target marketing of the city to target, select developers and retailers to fulfill the needs and wants of the community. So I would say target, not only select, because select means that whoever landed here is what you have to choose from, but target is more proactive. So I want to give a more proactive sense of identifying, targeting developers and retailers to bring into the city.
Okay, so you suggested target, select developers and retailers. And then you added some words. What were the words that you added? For the needs of the community or something?
Yeah, to fulfill the needs and wants of the community.
All right, and Jaclyn, you captured that at the end of the first.
So the idea to be more proactive, a sense of proactiveness.
Okay. All right, we caught that. Other comments about Goal B? Okay. Then we're going to move on to Goal C. And I'm going to do the first four of these and Jaclyn's going to do the last four so that you don't just have me talking at you, but she'll do, she'll do the next four so you'll get a relief from me. And we will take a formal break at some point, maybe actually when we get through the first four, we will. But if you have other needs, you know, there's restrooms down the hall and coffee and all that stuff. All right, so Goal C is outstanding city services. So first, we have develop a succession plan for each department. Oh, could I advance a slide? Thank you, I forgot about that. Yes. All right, so we've got succession, develop a succession plan for each department. Next, we've got pursue policies and initiatives promoting outstanding employee recruitment, wellness, professional development, and retention. Okay. Three is implement the recommendations of the 2020 Compensation Classification Study. I guess since it's 2021, that's completed then, right? Okay, and council's seen it? Okay, so that'll be coming up. Okay, develop a benchmark employee marketing and recruitment strategy. Not seeing any, you're going to wave at me if you have issues with any of these, right? Next is develop a program to annually assess resident and business partner satisfaction. All right, next is implement the recommendations and strategies outlined in the Plant and Moran Organizational Cultural Study. Next is build an office of innovation to formally oversee the implementation and performance management measurement of the, of this adopted strategic plan and work closely with departments to help them innovate while effectively and efficiently delivering services. All right, next is conduct a formal business and operations analysis of all city services to identify areas of improvement and opportunities. Thank you. I'm only, I'm not looking at the, too bad. Too bad we don't have that remote. All right, next, wait, I'll just stand here. Although we got everything left on this one. Okay, so next is, is conduct a formal business and operations analysis of all city services to identify areas of, I said that, didn't I? Sorry about that. All righty, benchmark city service levels as a guide to potential improvement efforts. That'll come partly with the, with the one before that, with his, which is doing, doing your performance measures. Pursue formal lean training for each department and deploy lean principles. Next, conduct a space and facilities audit and explore options for expansion and growth. Update and implement the facilities and condition assessment plan. Develop a formal five-year information technology strategic plan. And next is continue pursuit of What Works City certification through Johns Hopkins University and Bloomberg Philanthropies and Harvard, which is based on data-driven decision-making. And next, last in the list right now is implement the Water Utility Master Plan, Stormwater Utility Master Plan, and Solid Waste Business Plan. So are there, do we have a discussion for any additional objectives for city services? So that would mean that we do not even need a small group for this, it sounds like, which is good. That's wonderful. All right, do we have permission to move on? Yes, Michael?
Sorry, the, yeah, the one thing that I actually disagree with and I think needs to be a long, separate work session is the recommendations and strategies outlined in the Organizational Cultural Study. I think there were a few things that I think had wide support, but I know there were a number of items that were certainly very divided.
So, let's see, so do you want to, do you want to, is your recommendation to remove it from this list and just deal with it separately?
Yes, it is.
All right, how about, do we have, is there consensus? How do other people feel about that?
I agree with that. And also, I just wanted to, I think that we, I'd like to see this in a small group. It's a very, as a strategic focus, it sees, seems that Goal C sucks a lot of attention. And I just wonder if that attention needs to be more directed towards Goals A, B. I know they're all goals, but it seems very centric towards things that might not necessarily benefit the residents the most.
So you're thinking that some of the objectives should stay but be, but go under other goals? Is that what you're?
Perhaps. It seems very heavy in a lot of operational things that might not necessarily benefit the residents directly.
Okay, Matt?
Maybe, maybe to make that better, maybe at the end of, implement the recommendation strategies outlined in the Plant, Moran Organizational Cultural Study as agreed upon by council. That way we can, it's not necessarily implement it, but we don't throw the whole study out and we look at it and do what we need to do as agreed upon by council.
Okay, would that, would that be helpful then, just if we add those words, Michael?
For me, I'd certainly support that compromise with a small, fine-tuning. Just specifically calling out the items agreed upon by mayor and council because it was, I just wouldn't want it to sound like it's all agreed on. But yeah, for the items that we go through, as agreed upon by mayor and council.
Matt, does that work for you then? Okay, that sounds like a good compromise. All right, so what I heard is that then there does, that Christine would like to have a small group looking at all of the objectives about whether they should be going into other areas or not. So we can do that. Let's, let's keep going and we'll, please, Mayor?
I'm, I'm a little confused because this is outstanding city services and the way our city government functions internally directly impacts our citizens and businesses. So if we aren't doing everything from employee recruitment, et cetera, to this whole list of nuts and bolts, if we're not successful with that, that will impact the services and the efficiency that our citizens and businesses see. So I think it's very important to incorporate this.
Matt, T?
I agree.
Okay.
Agreed 100%. I think, you know, the health of the organization is what delivers the services and the benefits to the citizens.
So it sounds like there's consensus for just leaving it and not going in a small group. I mean, the bottom line is, it doesn't, I guess I would say that the objectives are really important because that's what your staff is going to focus on in the end. And so the, and they will suggest priorities and then, and then bring those back. So it doesn't sound, I mean, I guess it's almost like a deck of cards that if you shuffle them, you still have all 52. So I guess, why don't we do this? Let's move on and then we'll, and then it sounds like there's consensus to just leave it as it is. And then maybe Christine, if there's something in particular that you feel like, well, gee, I'd really like to recommend moving one or two to something else, maybe you could just do that, do it that way instead of going into a small group.
I'm okay with that. I believe that these things are important, but I, I see them as part of one, maybe more, that's how the operation should be run. I mean, it, it's an objective and is it, it should be a given that we're doing these things.
So did you need, so your point is you need to articulate it and there are people...
But that's okay, we can move on. We've discussed it.
Okay, all right, Michael?
So just for clarification, so is there a discussion of, for the, for that third bullet on page six, leaving it the same or still with the update that was made?
No, no, we would add, then, there's consensus to add the words that you suggested, which are... Yeah, so that would change, but we don't need to have another, a group actually go there because you're all, you've all got consensus about it. Okay. All right, then let's move on to D. All right, D is exceptional collaboration, community engagement, and customer service. All right, so first, under this goal is develop a community engagement strategic plan. Okay. Next is implement the recommendations and strategies from the Jackson Spalding Communications Audit. Next, increase internal capacity to implement the findings of the communications audit through a fully-staffed community engagement division. Okay, identify expectations for collaboration, community engagement, customer service, and communication. Next, develop a program to annually assess resident and business partner satisfaction. Okay, next is provide a professional annual media relations, professional annual media relations training for elected officials and key city staff. Provide professional annual customer service training to all employees. We do that. Just, might as well get that in there, but we do, we do customer service training. Okay, next is create a formal special events plan and event staffing analysis. Okay, next is create a formal special events plan and event staffing analysis. And last is conduct proactive and targeted marketing about city facilities and events. Okay, so, please, Michael?
So knowing that it's about, you know, collaboration and community engagement as well, and we even talk about, you know, special events and, and targeted marketing for those events, something this council has discussed a number of times, and I, and I feel was unanimous, was, I would think something along the lines of an objective, objective of increasing the number of events, in the sense of just creating, or creating opportunities or ease for businesses or community, you know, community members, et cetera, to host events, just something where, where Roswell is a destination for, for events, because I, I feel we have some things that are touching it, but we have nothing specifically touching upon, you know, really being that destination and having more, better events with more inclusion, et cetera.
So you want to add an objective that says to create more, or create, create additional citywide events?
Either, either creating more citywide events, or creating a program that makes it easier for Roswell stakeholders to create events. So either the city can do it, or just make it easier for businesses and residents to do it.
Okay, let's hear some comments about that. If anybody has a feeling about what they would prefer, if you, there's consensus on the idea of adding this, or, and help with the thought about what might, what, what the rest of you would like to see. Well, first off, is there, is there consensus about the idea? Or Jeff, go ahead, do you have a comment?
I was just gonna make a comment. I think when we were talking about this objective, that special events plan, the intent was to incorporate that kind of staffing and expansion between kind of Chris's office with Michael and mine as well. And if we need to specify, it probably fits within that bullet point, but that's what kind of the concept of that events plan was to, to tackle.
So, Michael, go ahead.
Then, then how about just for making that clear, because I, I just wanted, want to make sure it's clear what the goal, one of the goals out of the plan would be, in, in addition to the event staffing analysis, I would think, just something in that bullet, specifying, you know, a special events plan, which either increases, you know, more city, city events, or makes it easier for community members to host city events, something along those lines being a part of the plan.
That work with, is that everybody, everybody's okay with, if we change that wording? Then Jeff, how about, instead of having a whole group worry about it, why don't you think about?
Michael.
Michael, too. Okay, think about the wording, and then, when the groups come back, just suggest, or Jaclyn's jotting it down, maybe that's how we, but think about what would be good for that, good wording change, and we won't go into a small group, we'll just go ahead and have that change made. Okay. Any other comments about goal D? Please, Michael and Marcelo.
So for success measures, not for key objectives.
Well, success, so, go ahead and say that, but what happened is, you know, we, we managed to do some success measures, and then, because you've got a whole team with Patrick and Harpreet, they're actually going to refine these later. But, but go ahead and mention it if you'd like, because then they'll take your, you know, they'll take your comments, too. But we're not really focused on those today because of the Johns Hopkins and the Bloomberg connection, they're gonna, they're gonna work on those separately.
Excellent, yes, I'll quickly mention that, if we're, as long as we're having the objectives of tracking satisfaction, to make sure a success measure we're seeing is increased satisfaction, and then also knowing the special events plan, seeing increased, we already have attendance, but also increased just number of events.
The number of events, okay, sure. That would be logical. Marcelo?
So, here for the goal statement, you know, promote outstanding collaboration, community engagement, customer service, and communication at all levels among city departments. I will suggest to use city government instead of departments, because the, I don't know if the elected official office is considered a department, or just considered part of the government. So that is my.
Okay, so the suggestion is to change the word departments in the goal statement to?
City government.
City government?
Include not only every single operational department, but also the office of elected officials.
All right, is everybody okay with that? Okay. All right, then we can make that change. Okay, you want to switch? All right, we're gonna switch and let Jaclyn talk to you, and I'll make notes, and hopefully you'll be as kind to her as you were to me.
And, I'll give you these. Switch off of these, our colors remain the same.
All right, well, and I, um.
Thank you.
Did, is there color coding I need to make over?
Well, the green checkmarks are what's okay, and the blue circle is where the revisions are.
Okay.
Okay. E is safe and secure community. Safe and secure community. So the goal statement is pursue policies, models, and initiatives that support sustainable, high-quality police and fire services, consistent with industry best practices for public safety, with the intent to proactively safeguard city residents, visitors, businesses, and property. Okay, so the key objectives. Conduct a professional audit slash gap analysis of our fire service. And parenthetically, it says where we are now, and where we need and want to be. I don't see any hands to comment, so we'll go to the next one. Develop a long-range fire service delivery plan. Next one, incorporate the principles of 21st century policing. Next one. Develop a strategy to market, recruit, and retain high-quality public safety personnel. The next one, complete the design for a new 911 center and develop funding options. Next one. Establish a video security plan to incorporate internal and external resources. Next one, expand fire safety education programs. The next one, conduct and audit all emergency management practices, I mean, all emergency management policies, procedures, and programs, and pursue measures to remedy any findings. So far, so good. Last one, last key objective. Implement citywide training and certifications in emergency management operations, including FEMA operational certifications across all stakeholders. Are there any additions to this goal of safe and secure community? Yes, Marcelo?
Yes, um, so I have maybe a question. I don't know if the, inside the 21st century policing is incorporating sensitivity training, or is something that we need to spell out differently from the 21st century policing?
So the question is, is, is about 21st century policing?
No, the question is, where will go sensitivity training?
Where does, where does sensitivity training fit? Is that a part of the 21st century policing?
So 21st century policing encompasses a lot of training. I don't know if it specifically mentions sensitivity. What type of sensitivity training are you referring to?
Well, there's training specifically for public safety about sensitivity, you know, how to deal with issues on the community, you know, it's well-known, sensitivity training is well-known, the public safety, the community.
Biased-based sensitivity training, cultural-based sensitivity training?
Yeah, everything that in, you know, include the, how they will interact public safety officers with the community.
There's a lot of different biased and cultural-based trainings that are included in that, yeah.
Okay, so we can go through all of them.
Okay, so that meets your concern. Any other additions to this goal? Yes, Michael?
No, no additions to the objectives. I'm not gonna get into any, but, uh, knowing that we're not discussing today, but I'll definitely look forward to discussing additional success measures when we get to that point.
Okay. Success measures will be key to all of the goals. Okay. If there are no additions, I'm gonna, I'm gonna advance a slide. Okay, F is good governance through, through organizational excellence. The goal statement reads, provide residential and business partners with fair, honest, and open governments through collaboration, innovation, and adherence to best practices. The key objectives, establish an organizational structure that is consistent with the city The next objective, conduct a professionally facilitated seminar with all elected officials and executive team to determine, clarify, and memorialize roles and responsibilities. The next, next objective, develop and adopt a formal leadership training program for elected officials and key city staff. Next, implement the recommendations and strategies outlined in the Plant Moran organizational cultural study. And we should probably modify it based on the wording that we changed there as agreed upon? Consistent in the wording? Okay, we'll make that wording consistent. Lastly, develop a strategy for flexible work environments, parenthetically, pandemic response, crisis readiness, recruitment incentive. Any additions or changes to this goal? Yes, Michael?
So I certainly agree with the goal statement, so no, no updates there. As for, this is, this is one where, again, as, as I look at the whole strategic plan, and kind of what I'll be looking at when we have a final version, and whether or not I, I feel this is representing the will of the residents, comes down to what are our priorities, and do those priorities reflect the priorities of residents? And just my concern here is, these are, these are things that will take a lot of attention, they'll take a lot of time, and my concern is they're not things that in any way directly support our residents or the needs that they expressed from when, from when the survey stuff was, was read out. And so, for example, establish an organizational structure that is consistent with the city charter. It has been my understanding that this is, this is something that has been consistent and compliant with the city charter. So if that's, if that's not the case, that's gonna be a much larger discussion. If, if instead, this is just purely establish a new organizational structure, then that's where I really question, where is the benefit to the residents? How is it gonna save them tax dollars? How is it gonna give them better service? As for, conduct a professionally facilitated seminar, so I hear that part, and I hear tax dollars. So, so is that money really well-spent? I think that's an important, bigger debate than just signing off on this right here, right now. And, and ultimately, I, I do think it is important for elected officials to get together and certainly vote publicly, and memorialize, and clarify what roles and responsibilities are for everyone. So that's, that's something that's important, but again, the way I see it written here is it's a distraction from actually helping the residents, helping the businesses. Develop and adopt a formal leadership training program for elected officials and key staff. And again, I, you know, I'm always a fan of training programs, I love, I always love the opportunity for, for, for everyone, you know, senior individuals and junior individuals, new hires, I, I love, love training, but again, at all times, you gotta remember, I have the hat on of how, how are we making sure that, that all of our time is being spent to support our residents? Already got into the Plant and Moran, and then, yeah, strategy for flexible work environments. I probably would have questioned that a little more before the pandemic, but certainly after the pandemic, I think that's something that makes sense. But, but overall, I guess I just have a concern that, that too much of this is, is not resident-focused, so that's, that, that's not an individual one, but it gets back to, I feel like we need to make sure when, if, if we are gonna approve this strategic plan, that I need, I need to make sure that we're spending time going through, all right, what exactly do we hear from the residents? Is this strategic plan truly accomplishing that? Those are my reactions to that.
Any comments? Yes, Matt?
I think we had this discussion at the last one. I couldn't disagree more. I think that a strong staff, a strong staff with direction, a strong staff with proper training, tools given, and a city charter that is followed, that's our constitution within the city, is paramount. Without those, I think all the things that we, we're talking about don't get done, so I, I just fundamentally disagree with this.
Yes, Michael?
Sure, so, again, what, what I haven't heard is specifically, are we not following the city charter today? If so, what are those? And, that, that would be an urgent need, in which case, I don't even think we should be, be waiting for the city, the strategic plan, we should be discussing that ASAP. But again, going back to, I kind of felt it was a little hyperbolic, in the sense that we, we discussed some really important goals that I feel we absolutely can accomplish. Safe and secure community, all these aspects, absolutely crucial, you know, and I'll just pick on the one, since Councilman Zapata had asked the chief about it. Incorporate the principles of 21st century policing, crucial, so many benefits to it. I don't see how anything in F either supports or, or, or hurts that. Transportation, making sure that we're focused on the community, making sure that we're making sure we're actually repaving our roads, making sure that we're actually focused on Roswell residents, crucial. I don't see how F either enhances that or, or hurts it. And actually, in fact, what I see is, again, distraction. We're talking multiple of these things costing money, and is that money that could actually be better spent in training transportation staff, or hiring, hiring just, you know, contractors for repaving, et cetera? It's just, I, I really question, is this, is this more for, for those of us that spend our time in city hall, or is this more for those that are outside of city hall? And, and again, I'm, I'm afraid it's the former, not the latter.
Yes, Marie?
I think one way to maybe turn this around and look at how it benefits the citizens is to, to look at the goal statement, and I think what we really want, what the intention of organizational excellence is to build an organization that is nimble and responsive to the needs of residents. So I think if we can work in some of that language, so that it's more outward-looking in the goal statement rather than internally, I, you know, again, I think a healthy organization helps us to serve and be responsive to citizens, and I think that message might be, might be missing a little bit in the goal statement.
So revise the goal statement to focus on being nimble and responsive to residents.
Right.
Yes, Matt?
Again, I think this is just a fundamental disagreement on where excellence starts. I think it starts with our staff, and through these key objectives. If we're worried about semantics here, then a key objective can be, continue to follow the city charter, if that is something that is, if, if the first part of that sentence is objectable, ejectenable, because, you know, again, the city charter is what we should be following at all times, whether it is now, or it's changed in the future, or whatnot. It's our constitution, and when, when we aren't, if we aren't, you know, then we're out of line, so.
Yes, Michael?
So, and actually, I think I did hear some common ground there, because again, my, my initial reaction is frankly, I, I'm always concerned with casting too big of a net, and, and trying to, when you try to, when you try to tackle too much, I feel you're not gonna. when you try to, when you try to tackle too much, I feel you're not gonna really hit what those key priorities are. I think too many, too many goals are frankly dilutive. But that being, so, so although my initial preference was just seeing goal F as not a priority, but based on what he said, I think, I think certainly it would make more sense to me if, instead of establish an organizational structure that is consistent with the city charter, just as he had said, continue following an organizational structure that is consistent with the city charter. That, that sounds to me less work intensive, less risk of just a, a focus that's not on residents. And then as for, conduct a professionally facilitated seminar with, with all elected officials, that to me seems like a, again, I, I just, I just feel a lot of the time we spend money that doesn't benefit the residents, in which case, instead, I think it could be something of, request the mayor to host a work session with elected officials and the executive team to determine, clarify, memorialize, memorialize roles and responsibilities. That's something that, that makes sense. And then having a public vote on each of those, those items. And then, yeah, I guess, I guess those are the, those are the two bigger, bigger things. And, and again, I guess, I guess just a concern where the devil would be in the details is the amount of time and money and, and just, just opinions and positions regarding formal leadership training program for elected officials and city staff. I mean, what does that, what does that mean? You know, for, a formal training program for elected officials? I hope we're not having anything that's telling how somebody should vote on a topic or feel about an issue or something along those lines. That's, that's where I get concerns when I, when I see a lot of this.
So the second bullet point, though, I just want to clarify, you want to remove the reference to a professionally facilitated seminar. Okay. All right, Marcella, you had your hand up?
Yeah, thanks. Um, yeah, I mean, the first point about the city charter, our constitution, is kind of obvious. I mean, have to be done, and I don't think our legal department will ever let us do anything against the charter. So I think it's a redundant, obvious thing. It's like saying, you know, transportation department have to take care of all the transportation system in the city of Roswell. It's most, more or less the same thing. So I think that, I don't see the point of that, because have to be done. Our city attorney and the office of the city attorney will make sure that we always follow our city charter and constitution. So I don't see the point of having this there, because if you're gonna get into this, you can add on everything following the charter, because this is what we need and must do.
So the, yes, Matt, T, and then Christine?
I'm fine with, with Michael's change to the word continue to, that's fine. Councilman Palermo used a very important word in one of his discussion points earlier, and that word was distraction, okay? When, when we don't operate in the most efficient way, either staff or most importantly, the elected officials, we create distraction which gets in the way of making all of these objectives happen. When it takes a council member a long time to understand exactly what your role is, especially if you're new to government, that's, that, that wastes a lot of time, effort, and money of staff. It gets in the way of meeting objectives, and we should have that kind of program, whether it's professionally facilitated, whether it's internally facilitated, doesn't really matter to me. But understanding what our roles and responsibilities are is not only important to getting these projects done, it's also important that, that our taxpayers, which is our citizens and our businesses, also understand what those roles are. And, and that is another issue that I think that's out there, that's part of this, that's why this is important, is, is, is they need to understand, everyone needs to understand those roles, responsibilities, both inside the building and outside the building, so that we can all be more effective in, in meeting all of the goals and objectives that we set. So whether it's done professionally or not professionally, it doesn't make a bit of difference to me. But it's very important that we understand, clarify, memorialize what the roles and responsibilities are of, of elected officials as they relate to executive team, et cetera. That's, you know, that, I think that's, that is, that is paramount. Our charter is a bit different than many other cities' charters in that it has a different role for the relationship between mayor and city administrator. That role can be confusing. I think identifying that role helps future councils, future mayors, future city administrators, future staff to understand how that'll work. So to me, the word distraction was very important, because we shouldn't be a distraction. We should be effective and efficient, and understanding those roles and responsibilities is important. So to me, it's not just a professionally facilitated seminar, it's a whole process that each new council should go through. So that you understand that, and it should be repeated every, I guess that would be every two years, that, that you go through this and understand and, and do the refresher of, of who does what, where, and how. It's not intuitive, especially to people who are new to government. We now have something, we've, and we've had for, for a cycle now, that the city never had before, and that's term limits. And so it is quite likely that very often we'll have very, very new council people, some who may only have an entire council where the, where the most experience anyone has is two years. And so you go through a two-year process of learning then, what your roles and responsibilities are, how you're supposed to deal with it. So again, let me just, just emphasize, it's both internally understanding those things and also externally, our citizens, our taxpayers, our businesses, understanding what those, you know, how, how, how our government is designed to work and how it works most efficiently to get these items accomplished. So that's all I.
So you can, so you agree with the, with the wording of the first objective to continue, right? But your add to the second objective is about a facilitated, some type of, not, doesn't have to be professionally, but a facilitated seminar with each new council and the executive team. To do the rest of this sentence, determine, clarify, memorialize roles and responsibilities.
Yes, yes, or something like that, yeah.
Okay, Christine, you are next.
Thank you. So I have a couple of thoughts on this, and I'm just gonna put it out there. I, I wonder if some of these things can, cannot be put under the goal C, the outstanding city services, strategy for flexible work environments like pandemic response, that would seem an operational thing that the staff would do to continue outstanding city services. But, but a couple other points, as far as conducting the facilitated seminars with elected officials. As a newly elected official a year ago, and I'm sure my colleagues have gone through this, we go through the University of Georgia Vincent Institute of Training. So we do go through two or three days of training, and also we're introduced to departments, and, and there is already a program. I'm not opposed to doing something more improved, but I don't know that that is a, a key objective. It's an operational, again, it's an operational thing that, that, that should be being done. The other thing, the success measure is transparency. And if I recall, when we first started talking about this, transparency for this, to the citizens was, was key. And now transparency has become a success measure, and my question is, can we somehow elevate transparency to be in one of the objectives, and is this the, the goal for it to be that I just wanted to?
Do you have any suggestive wording about transparency as an objective?
I have to think about that.
All right, but, but your suggestion, though, is to perhaps combine some of the objectives in F with some of the objectives in C?
Right, and, and I echo some of what Mike Palermo is saying is, where, you know, again, where are the benefits to the, the citizens? I mean, that's what this is all about, the strategic plan, in my, my eyes. And of course, our operational efficiency, and if we're better at doing our jobs and understand our jobs, it, you know, it will flow down. But I'm just wondering if, if there's different places for a couple of these things.
So with regard to the ones that might be combined, the last bullet point you mentioned specifically.
Yes, the, the flexible work environments. It seems to me that it would blow nicely into C.
It's more appropriate with goal C, okay? All right, so we have some work to do on, on this one. Some changes in wording. Are there any adds? No, okay.
Not gonna get any exact detail, but, but yeah, so Councilmember Hall had raised the point on kind of why I support even the goal statement. You know, the focus is purely on fair, honest, open governance through collaboration, but, you know, best practices, et cetera, so that, that'll make sense. But then the key objectives, many of them don't seem to really be hitting upon that. And, and where I think really something, if we are to keep this goal, I think something regarding transparency should be added to a key objective to be very clear. But, so some things I've heard from other council members I agree with, some things I've heard I do not agree with. I don't want to focus too much on this, because again, my whole issue is that, that this is not nearly as important as the ones we have coming up, which involve intentional and balanced community growth and exceptional quality life. These are ones, along with safe and secure community and a few others, that I feel the residents actually care about and that we're actually accountable to make sure we focus on and deliver.
All right, so Amy, you do have a note, though, to add an objective about transparency. Great, okay. I'm gonna move ahead. Goal G is intentional and balanced community growth. And the goal statement is, adopt and implement policies, strategic plans, and master plans that support intentional and balanced growth initiatives consistent with the comprehensive plan, previously adopted plans in conjunction with regional plans and identified best practices in municipal development and planning. Okay, the key objectives, implement the strategies identified in the comprehensive plan. Okay, next objective, complete key small area master plans in preparation for future growth. Next, evaluate the unified development code to update sections to include regulations that foster redevelopment. Next, conduct a formal, professional recodification of the unified development code and municipal code of ordinances.
What is, what does that mean?
Well, what it means is that you, I'm gonna let staff, I'm a planner, but I'm gonna let staff.
It means we're gonna, we're gonna go through a formal process where we actually look at every section of our codes, make sure that there's no conflicting language with other sections. You know, as, as you know, we go through a lot of amendments, because we have a lot of conflicts. This would put us through a formal process where we clarify that all in one sweep. So it's just kind of taking everything we do, combining into a process, so that's, that's the recodification. That would be through the council, you guys would, would adopt that.
So just, so just to be clear, so it's not a matter of staff going through and saying, you know what? Let's, let's do a text amendment here because we want to allow taller buildings? It's not, it's more of just, hey, we've had a lot of changes over the years, let's go through and make sure it all just kind of connects really clearly well together?
Housekeeping.
Okay, next objective, evaluate and update the urban design guidelines to reflect current best practices in local planning. Lastly, create incentives related to zoning elements to encourage redevelopment in targeted areas. Are there any additions to this goal? Marcella?
Yeah, I would like to go back and understand better the third and the fourth point.
What about the third and the fourth points?
If I can get more clarification, more information about the third and the fourth point.
Okay.
Evaluate and conduct.
So the UDC update, updating, and then the formal recodification. Those two things would go to, are, go hand in hand. After you update, you recodify.
More details of what the, the philosophy is behind this.
Gary, more details?
I've got specific questions about it. So the recodification is just that housekeeping item I was talking about where we go through and clean everything up, make sure there's no conflicts with our, from one code to the other, state codes that have changed. And the UDC, now, Eleanor, you want to talk about that a little bit?
I'll be happy to. Councilmember Zapata, the first one, evaluate the UDC to update sections. The intent was that that would be related to, in goal B, there are objectives related to developing incentives for redevelopment. As a part of that process, you then have to take that package of information, if it's specific code changes, in order to implement those, to make those incentives possible. So this was to capture in the UDC specifically to make sure that the code that you adopt will support the incentives that are in these other goals, such as the economic development items. And then the third, or sorry, the fourth, conduct the formal recodification. As Gary mentioned, it is to take a look at both of those documents, not just the UDC, but the code of ordinances. For example, there is a chapter in the code of ordinances related to land development and subdivision development, which is a copy essentially of what's in the UDC, because that's where it resided originally before the UDC was developed. Generally speaking, those have been kept up to date, but not always. So there may be duplication that needs to be removed from the code ordinances to make sure that you don't have conflict when there are changes made to the UDC. So that is, is, as Gary mentioned, that is just housekeeping to make sure that the documents as a whole work together correctly, and that there's not any contradictions in the code that is not enforceable. So for example, it says, you shall do this here, but you shall not do the exact same thing somewhere else. You need to make sure that that is cleaned up. So it's not a staff-directed, it would be looking at that through a professional eye of how the code is written and making sure those conflicts are brought to the attention of council and cleaned up to make sure that the code is what you want it to be. Does that help?
Yeah, thanks. And the other word that came to attention is professional, means that could be done inside City Hall with the expertise of people at City Hall, so we'll have to, you know, have extra cost for taxpayers, outsourcing with consultants out there.
Yeah, we'd have to farm this one out.
We can do it inside, so we can.
No, we would have to farm the recodification out. The UDC stuff maybe at some level, but it's typically a law firm that you have to hire to do the recodification. It's very involved, very lengthy, would involve probably a committee at some level. You know, you're talking about mass amendments coming to the city council with recommendations on those conflicts. So we would need a professional who's experienced in doing this to help us do that. So we'd have to farm that out.
Okay, so do we have direct impact on, into the budget and the taxpayers' money then to be allocated?
Yes.
Yes, if that was a question, yes.
Thank you.
Quick question or comment on the last one, create incentives related to zoning elements to encourage redevelopment in targeted areas? I'm curious about whether or not here target areas need, needs to be further defined, either specifically calling out things like the Hockenbridge 400 Quadrant or Hockenbridge Corridor, East Roswell, Alfred Highway, or if we can just expand that a little bit to say in targeted areas identified by the comprehensive plan.
So I actually think it should be more so than just the comprehensive plan. And actually, I think it should line up with what we discussed as B. So we discussed, just define focus areas for economic development, which, and it'd be helpful within the SEDP as maybe a part of that, but it always could be beyond. But I would think if, if this council does support adding goal B, define the focus areas for economic development, then, then frankly, this one right here, the targeted areas, that would be what this is. So I could, I could potentially see, you know, economic development. So I could potentially see, you know, economic development, working with community development, and then working with council on coming up with these incentives for these targeted areas.
I guess I just see this one as being so important that I think we need to define it a little bit and put some emphasis on what those targeted areas are.
What if we put the targeted areas defined from goal B? Because that's where potentially, you know, I'm trying to, you know, just think of some underutilized strip malls or other, you know, blighted type areas. Those are things that I would think in goal B, we would have said, these are focus areas for economic development. And then right here, it's create incentives related to zoning elements to encourage redevelopment in those targeted areas that we've come up with as a council. And we could always, and when I was thinking for goal B, my thought was this is potentially a living, breathing type list in the sense of maybe there's one we haven't thought of. Two years later, you know what, we really need to make sure.
Correct.
Comdev and economic development are all actually very focused on this new area.
So linking the two goals together, those targeted areas with economic development areas, right? Yes, Matt?
So this is probably just semantics, but you know, I'd just like to say there's chance the UDC doesn't last five years. We might go in and redo the whole thing, which I think we need to do anyway, but you know, that's a different conversation. So maybe it says UDC or adopted zoning code.
Number three, then, or?
It says UDC.
It'd be three and four.
Or, here, which were, or adopted code?
Adopted zoning code. Okay.
I'm going to ask a clarifying question about that. The UDC is not just zoning code, it also includes land development code, stormwater, stream buffers, trees, et cetera. Just want to make sure that we don't preclude those items just by referring to zoning only.
We could say adopted comprehensive code, or what words do you recommend?
Adopted code is great, I mean, I have no problem with that.
Adopted code. Not specific to zoning.
Thank you.
Okay. Are we ready for the last goal, which is exceptional quality of life?
Yeah, we promised a breakout with that.
Okay, very quickly, the goal statement is deliver exceptional community facilities, programs, events, partnerships, parks, and trails which promote community vitality and exceptional livability, thereby creating a sense of belonging for all residents, businesses, and visitors. The key objectives. Develop a program to annually assess resident and business partner satisfaction. Next, develop a special events marketing strategy for key events within the city. Next, pursue and leverage alternative energy initiatives. Next, develop and implement the 2022 Recreation Parks Historic and Cultural Affairs Master Plan. Next is implement the 2016 River Parks Master Plan. Next is relocate Doc's Cafe to final location and incorporate the use into historic assets, into the historic assets division. Next, implement the Americans with Disabilities Act Transition Plan. Next, analyze and develop a long-term capital investment program for public parks and community facilities. Next, create a park and land acquisition program based on long-term, as in 2015, resident population projections, 2050 resident population projections to meet the standard of 10 park acres per 1,000 residents. And that's the last objective, Michael.
So I really like this one, and you know, just like a few others, I think this is just such an important focus for our residents. Question I have actually for Michael, so Mr. Fisher, actually, I'm not sure if it's you or if it'd be a different department that would know, but doesn't the city have some type of green rating or efficiency rating, whether it's a gold rating or something along those lines?
We do, we're an ARC green community, we're to the gold level. So we started out as a silver and have moved up. As a matter of fact, we're getting ready to recertify next year on that. So that's one of the reasons that I actually had thought about putting this in here, is that we do leverage, and it's not just alternate energy, although that's, you know, can be a big thing, but it's how we handle our natural resources, our water issues and things like that. So that's why that's a goal that's in here. Electric vehicle charging stations, and we have a couple, we have the Padilla Station out here and one of the other parks in the city hall. So that's what this goal is leaning towards, is keeping us, for our citizens, some of them are way more passionate than others, but yet I think everybody's interested in using our energy appropriately. So that's the intent, though.
Oh, absolutely. I'd say I love all the objectives here. Personally, I don't have any changes to any of these. Basically, what I'm wondering is if we'd want to add one, that would be something along the lines of maintain the, you know, gold status and, you know, for the ARC green community, and strive towards, you know, towards the platinum status, or something along those lines, just to keep it front and center, because I do think there's a number of residents that do take a lot of pride in that and want to see Roswell just be this successful green city.
Maintain the ARC gold status and strive towards the platinum designation.
Why don't we say maintain the ARC green community certification? And the only reason I say that is sometimes the, in this case, the platinum level, maybe a level that was created just for another level, and it's kind of like a lead certification. The intent gets you so far, then it just costs you money to get that next level, and I don't know that you get the benefit out of it, but I do agree with you. If we have one that says maintain the ARC green community certification, we'd probably be great.
Well, so I actually, so what I, I think I still would be more comfortable with maintaining the gold, and I purposely worded it strive towards the platinum and not saying become platinum for the reasons you just mentioned.
Exactly.
But yeah, if it turns out, there's six things that are needed to platinum, three of them are actually pretty easy, these ones are really hard, or it's just, or maybe there's no big difference, but it's just a lot of money. Council can certainly decide they're not doing that, but at least you say, you know what, here's actually one thing that gets us closer to platinum, let's just be gold plus that one.
Yes, that'd be perfect.
Thank you. Marcelo and Jeff.
Yeah, I have, you know, I would like to suggest a small addition on point number two of the key objectives. Develop a special events annual program and marketing strategy for key events within the city.
Annual program.
Right, I would like to add annual program and then marketing strategy for key events. And my other suggestion would be for the exceptional quality of life, add something about the environment. For example, there's an initiative to start thinking about native plants in the city. So I think the environment is something that will help to the exceptional quality of life.
So you want to add an objective?
Right.
Okay, about the environment.
Correct.
Okay, all right.
There any suggestions about words then?
Yeah. Suggest a wording before I go to, before I go to you, Michael?
I was just going to actually ask if by adding the, adding the one that mentions the ARC Green City Gold Status striving towards platinum, that is environmentally focused, I'm wondering if that additional objective would help accomplish the goal and just show the focus?
Okay, yeah, I mean, anything that implied that we are taking into consideration the environment.
Okay, so we have it covered with that.
Yeah, I think it's covered. I don't know if the environment will have to be used somewhere on the sentence there, but so make it more clear.
And it does do that. Councilmembers Zapata, as a matter of fact, in the ARC gold community, there are equality things that we look at. There's, like I said, there's water and stormwater management that's in there, some of those best practices and things that you do above and beyond. So it actually, it's not just energy, it actually includes the environmental also.
Thank you.
Jeff?
It's, I think I'm catching it, but it sounds like the gold standard is an added bullet point that we're not going to take away the pursue and leverage, okay. Because as I'm thinking just about recent presentations, like with our A.S.A.N. building, that's, doesn't maybe necessarily fit within that gold standard, but it's a pursuit of energy efficiency that we're running after. And so just making sure that that fits within this. And then Councilmember Zapata, on your marketing and special events question, we have, and Michael and I have the task of working on, this goes back to goal D, the create a formal special events plan and marketing plan that includes the expansion of city events. I think we may be able to capture that kind of portion of what you're talking about on that side of it, and if we need to, we can duplicate it here, but I know that we're working on that piece of it as well, so it may capture what you're looking for.
Okay, great. Any other ads before the break? Okay, great. What time you want them back, Amy? Okay, so our plan originally was to come back and talk about these three areas, but I hear that lunch is actually ready, and there are some people besides me whose stomachs are growling. So I'm going to propose that we go ahead and have lunch now, and then we'll come back, and I think we can finish up, at least based on the group that I worked with, which had goal C and F was pretty efficient. So we'll see how that works, but I think you'll be better off if your stomachs are full instead of empty. So my understanding is that we have this room to eat lunch in, as well as the gym, so that you can spread out as much as you'd like. And the lunches are in bags in the room next door, and Karen says that she's ready. So let's, can we try for a half hour, come back at quarter after 12? Would that work for everybody? All right, then let's go ahead and do that. We'll see you at quarter after 12. Okay, are we ready to get started? So we're going to do the report outs from the small groups, and that's why Mohammed is standing very close to me, because he's going to do the report out for goal A, the changes and the revisions they made.
Thank you. So we had Councilmember Wilson, Chief Tony Poptos, and Chief James Conroy in the group on the first goal, which was dynamic transportation network that optimizes mobility. So we had a couple, three suggestions in the discussion earlier in the day. So the group discussed those, and here's what we are suggesting. So in the goals language, we were going to suggest to add, we thought that with the word "community" already in there, we thought the suggested addition of neighborhoods is already covered. It feels like it's redundant, but the group didn't have a problem in adding. So we could say reliable and constructive with priority to our community, neighborhoods, and sensitivity to the environment. So we could add that one word in there. Then we talked about adding three objectives. So the first one would be starting and finishing projects on time, on budget, while communicating progress to the community. So you know, this is one of those things we strive to do already, but definitely there is always a chance to improve. So we could definitely add this objective. The next one is prioritize residents, neighborhoods, and businesses in transportation projects. You know, again, we try and prioritize, you know, the local community and the local businesses already, but again, there's a chance to improve. So the group is suggesting to add this objective. The last one we had was to incorporate aesthetics, landscaping, and lighting into the design of transportation and mobility-related projects. So traditionally, you know, we have not necessarily been doing that. Again, the topmost reason is really the cost of these add-ons to any project, but we can definitely add this objective here and from the very beginning, include these things into the concept and design of transportation projects. So these are all the things we were going to suggest.
Were there any changes or clarifications? Changes or needs to, a need to clarify anything from that first group? Yes?
Sure, yes, I can just read the full statement. So provide a people-focused, innovative, multimodal transportation system that is compatible with regional plans, based on industry best practices and standards that work efficiently and safely while being accessible, reliable, and constructed with priority to our community, neighborhoods, and sensitivity to the environment. So the only change is to add neighborhoods. So community was already there, so we're just adding the word neighborhood.
How's that sound? Is that good? Okay. All right, group B.
All right, group B is, yes, thank you. Well done. Oh, dang it. Councilmembers Zapata, Judy, myself, Lenore, all part of this group. Did I miss, I don't miss anybody. Goal statement, pursue priorities that reinforce the importance of economic health to our overall quality of life and demonstrate the city's strong support for existing and future businesses. The city's economic growth and vitality strategies will promote sustainability, innovation, competitiveness, and entrepreneurship. And we had two bullet points that were identified to rework. The first was regarding future tax receipts, and as we discussed earlier today, that we just needed to refine and work on this a bit. And so we have evaluate the current risks of the tax base and identify mitigation and opportunity strategies to balance tax revenue based on future market forecasting and strategic objectives. I'll read it one more time. Yeah. Evaluate the current risks of the tax base and identify mitigation and opportunity strategies to balance tax revenue based on future market forecasting and strategic objectives.
We, Christine and I have talked a little bit.
Can I just sit, Mike, would you?
Sorry. We, Christine and I, have been looking at some options there, and I think what we're saying is the same. I mean, you can evaluate it, you know, we talked about building a model to do it. So that we're a little more specific as to what we want to see, and it's more, and it's a dynamic model, okay? So theoretically, something comes up, we want to know, does it help or hurt getting to the target? We can throw it in there and see what happens. So, yeah, you can, that's fine. I mean, our wording is fairly similar. So, yeah, you can, that, that's fine. I mean, our wording is, is fairly similar.
Please just read a couple of those wordings, just draw them out.
Yeah, you know, develop a tax revenue-based model and project future revenue. You don't have to, I can hand them to you if you want me to. Develop a tax revenue-based model and project future tax requirements to support future needs/goals. And there's another one, similar wording, develop a tax revenue dynamic model, identifying current and target mix of revenue sources that will support future needs, maintaining the lowest tax rates, while, while maintaining the lowest tax rates, or shifting the weighting of the tax burden, burden on commercial versus residential. So it, it isn't just, to us, it wasn't just evaluating, it's building a model to determine, you know, where are we going? Because it's real nice to pass lots of rules and regulations, but if they're not going to get us to where the tax, where we think our tax base should be, then we have an issue. Say it correctly, Christine? Here are four versions. You may take your pick. The wording is, is nearly identical for all four of them.
We really need to get, we need to make sure that, that we have consensus on something, because what we don't want is to give you back what we think you want, and then have you start to, start to make changes because we didn't get it right. So I really want to make sure that we, that you are in agreement of wording. And I think what we're going to do is write it on the flip chart, maybe at the front of the room, and then let you decide which version. Because we, I don't want, I don't want management partners picking a version, and then having you say, well, wait, 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 we don't like that version, which of course, we want you to like the version, not, not have us pick something. So if, I think Jaclyn's going to write them down. Yes, Matt, you have a better idea?
Before we do that, Matt and Christine, can you, since you did say it was similar, could you wordsmith that, putting model in it, to, to, so we don't go down the road of completely redoing it?
You know, you could say, create a model that evaluates blah, 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 continuing forward.
Create a model that evaluates the current tax base, and identify mitigation and opportunity strategies to balance tax revenue based on future market forecasting and strategic objectives.
But what, what we're, what we're trying to say is, we need, we're trying to identify a goal. And I'm just going to make up these numbers, 70/30. You know, we, we make a model, and we basically say this 60/40, 70/30, whatever, whatever this moving dynamic split is, this is, if the model's this way, this is what we can do. If the model's this way, this is what we can do. And then we, as a council, based on our constituents, can say, hey, you know, we want the needle to be kind of in this area, and that will help guide our decisions to get there.
And we already know many of the constraints, because Ryan prepares a five-year forecast, so we know what it's going to look like if, you know, nothing major occurs, right? Just kind of projecting things forward. And, you know, we know what that does, for example, to residential millage rates. If we don't want residential millage rates to go where that model indicates, we should have a way to say, in order to change that, we need X amount more commercial development, right? Because we know, and that's how we would set, that's how I would foresee us setting the target, is, is by starting with residential millage rate, right? If we want it to stay the same, now what do we have to do over here to make, to create that, that number? If we want it to rise a certain amount each year, then you know what has to happen on the other side of the equation. Does that, describe what you're looking for?
Right. And as we were trying to tackle this one with, I forgot Ryan was in our group too, I apologize, Ryan. We tried to stay away from a specific percentage basis in the goal, intentionally, because this is a five-year living document. And so in theory, that percentage would come out of this ongoing market and strategic objectives each year, that then starts to drive at what's that target in that sliding scale, coming out of the model to make some of those decisions at a policy level with council, millage rate and otherwise. And then, as it comes to some of these other elements of tax districts, community improvement, development, economic development director, they're then charged with that, what's that mixture moving forward and targeting future improvements that gets you to those goals and objectives?
And we have to be careful, because a lot of these things are very long-term. There's some short-term decisions and long-term decisions, so that has to be factored in.
Yeah, and I think, and Ryan, you may jump in, but as we're talking about this model forecasting, and I think that dynamic piece comes into it, this is kind of an ongoing evolution each year, or even half year, as we're continuing to evaluate all of these economic indicators, that starts to move that needle in that sliding scale around of residential, commercial, and what's the right mix at this point in time, based on what we know and what we're seeing coming down the road. So I guess, come a full circle, if we create a model that evaluates the current tax base, and identifies a mitigation and opportunity strategy, and maybe it's this, is to balance the tax revenue, is that where we're not hitting right?
We're just not going to tell you what that balance should be until we evaluate other things.
So the balance is okay?
Having it vague is fine.
Okay. And then future market forecasting and strategic objectives, does that get, Councilmember Hall, what kind of your thought process is, as far as that, that percentage mixture? That the strategic objectives, meaning, you know, everything you see on the wall, basically?
I wonder if it should be two bullet points, broken down into two.
Which, the strategic objectives piece?
The strategic objective piece to be a separate bullet item, because that, that's, that's different than, than the, than what we're saying in, in the first part. If anybody else would like to opine.
I didn't have my microphone. To support strategic objectives. And again, if, if you haven't done your revenue base properly, you can have all the strategic objectives you want, but you're not going to be able to do them.
So, balance tax rev, tax revenue based on future market forecasting to support strategic objectives?
And I, I do believe that after evaluating the risk of the current mix of the tax, we need to come with the set goal. And this was a little difference on the, on the team, back and forth, yes, no, we said, we need to set goals in terms of percentage between commercial and residential, we went back and forth. But I do believe that once we evaluate the risk of our current tax break between residential and commercial, we do need to set a goal. Could be a short-term, midterm, long-term, but you have to have a goal, because if not, you don't know where you're going. You don't know where you need to, to grow, or what kind of development you need to attract to the city. So that is my point. I think that after evaluation, we need to set a goal.
Right.
We may or may not achieve it, but at least we know where the north is.
Right. I certainly agree with, we should set a goal, but I don't think we set a goal by starting with a percentage. I think we start a goal, with a goal, by saying something like, we want millage rates to stay at, for residential at a certain level. And that will tell us what the percentage then needs to be. Because the model will spit out, you're ahead or you're short. So you start out with what you want to show, you know, your, your, the people who pay the tax base, right? And then you work forward and figure out, hey, I can get to a, whatever, 60/40, 70/30, you know, whatever the number is. But I think you have to do that math before you just establish a, a random number.
Sorry, does, as opposed to supporting strategic objectives, would you then define strategic objectives? Okay. Sure. All right, so here we are. Create a model that evaluates the current tax base, and identifies mitigation and opportunity strategies to balance tax revenue based on future market forecasting to support and define strategic objectives. Okay.
Yeah, I, I think one of the questions that I would have, you know, once we, as we're modeling and figuring out what that looks like, is what do we want that balance to be? And to me, that's one of the core strategic decisions that, that would need to be made. I mean, do we want to be, it might be very acceptable to be more heavily weighted as a residential community versus a business-driven revenue. We may want to turn that upside down. I just, I think that's kind of the critical strategic decision that needs to be made, once we have this information.
Again, though, we can be 100% residential. The impact of that is what happens to your residential millage rate. So I think you start out, because, let's say you want to be 90/10. If that means you're going to double everyone's taxes, you can just stop right there, because 90/10 is not going to work for people. I think you have to start out with what's coming out of people's pockets.
Right, right.
And then work to what, what might work as a number. And I think the word "define" does work in there, because, you know, it means you're further defined.
I think what I'm saying is, it needs to be a two-step, at least a two-step process, where you're modeling forecasting and then defining.
So did you want, wait, Matt?
No, and, and that's the reason we, we did it the way we did. Because if you would have said last year at this time, you looked at Alpharetta's tax base, would you want to switch places with them? You'd say, yeah, probably, you know? And, but if you looked at it today, Alpharetta would like to switch with us, because their business is struggling. So it's going to, you know, change to base upon the market and the market forecast, and what you can do. You know, right now, you know, sometimes it's single-family homes, sometimes it's, you can't build anything without multifamily. Sometimes it's retail, sometimes it's experiential, you know? So there's a lot of forecasting that would go into that model, that allowed us to then choose the direction of the council, and what level we want that at, based upon our economic experts in the finance department.
And also, we're taking consideration the cost of operating a city, which, you know, if you want to go to two extremes, one city 100% residential, how much does it cost to operate, versus a city that is 100% commercial, how much does it cost to operate the city? So I think that this also has to be, taken in consideration, to find the right mix between commercial and residential.
So are you okay keeping, keeping it as one? I've heard a couple people think it should be two different objectives. So who, is there anybody who's uncomfortable with what we've got now? And we added back the word "define," but I think it should say, define strategic objectives and support them. I mean, that's what, no? Support and define strategic objectives? Is that what you want?
My question is, I believe that we need to create a model, because we don't have one. And then we all need to have a strategic objective based on data from the model, as Councilmember Tizer is suggesting.
Okay, so your goal, your, your idea is to separate them out. One is, the one, the first objective would be to create a model that shows the effects of different, of the possible tax mix. What would, why don't you sell us something?
Maybe, could Ryan comment on, on this for us? We were not in your group, so, for our benefit.
Well, I think it would be helpful, I guess, I'm hearing all the conversation, and I know what we talked about in our group, but I think it would be helpful to get a little more clarification from you all. I mean, I get what you're saying, that you're wanting to see a model that, or what I'm hearing is that you want a model that takes into account our current revenue base, or revenue mix, and where we want to go with that, and what development will take us there?
So Ryan, you're, you're, you, you already have most of that completed, okay? I envision it looking just like your budget document, but we get to help you with the inputs, okay? And it's your budget document with a, your five-year outlook document, and we can change, I'm sure you have, you know, changeable inputs, right? But there may be some more that we might want to add, that then helps guide us to, you know, we want to go to, hey, Ryan, can we get to this percentage? And you say, only if you do this, with the inputs. So I think, I think you have a good, a good start on it, based on, you know, it's, it's your, it's your five-year forward budget projection with some, some changeable inputs.
Okay.
So, one more time then, are we satisfied with the wording that's been, that's been suggested and then modified? Is it okay? And if we need Jeff to read it one more time, then we can do that. Why don't you read it one more time, and then hopefully we can...
Sure. Create a model that evaluates the current tax base, and identifies mitigation and opportunity strategies to balance tax revenue based on future market forecasting to support and define strategic objectives.
So I don't know what balance means.
Correct. And that, and that is the point of the model, is that each time we're looking at the model, and we're forecasting into the future, that balance is defined by policy in those strategic objectives.
So then we need another separate strategic objective as to the vision of where we want that needle to end up, in my mind.
I think it's, I think it's the opposite, right? We know what our strategic objective's, what we want. The model's output is the balance, right? It tells us the 60/40, 40/60, 70/30, whatever it is, right? And then you got to do the mitigating factors that say, can I even get there?
So which piece has given us the ability to define that split, let's, that balance? The model itself?
Yes. And, and it does that by, by, by us freezing certain inputs.
Okay, I'm good.
Right?
Yeah. And, and I think that, from the group's perspective, that's why we started with the current tax base. We started with the baseline, so that gives you here, gives the council, here's what you have right now. And as you adjust, as you look at future redevelopment, development opportunities, increase in growth, that's going to create these changes in the model. And then you're going to have to evaluate, is that our future desired outcome, or is it not?
And that's, Ryan, why I suggested using an updated version of your five-year forward.
Okay. So second bullet point that we were working on, and I'll read the, the original, just so you have the context, is conduct proactive and target marketing of city to select developers and retailers. And in the discussion, a couple of the ideas as far as ads to this bullet point included, target developers and retailers who can meet the needs of the community, and define focus areas, industries, to guide and direct economic development. So those were some of the themes that we were looking at within this bullet point. And so the result of the discussion is the following. Identify and conduct proactive, targeted marketing that meets the needs and expectations of the community for key development opportunities. I'll go one more time. Identify and conduct proactive, targeted marketing that meets the needs and expectations... Identify and conduct proactive targeted marketing that meets the needs and expectations of the community for key development opportunities.
When we're, when we're talking about key development opportunities, we're not going to, for example, if we determine we want to bring high-tech jobs into Roswell, but we already have the space, so that's not a development opportunity. Let's say we want to redevelop a space. So I'm, I'm not sure, is, does this only deal with development? Or does this deal with bringing, trying to target and bring in the folks that you want?
I can comment on, on that, Mayor, because that was mine. It's the second one. It's to target and bring in the select development that we want to see in specific to the city of Roswell.
Okay, so this only relates to development, not...
Yeah, retailers, who, who...
So when we, so I, I asked the same question that you asked, and we went to Lenore, and it might be industry speak, but she believed development encompassed all of what you're talking about. The word "development," because I asked the same question.
So it would include a high-tech industry, company coming into an existing space that we don't need to do a darn thing?
Yes.
Okay. That's just a little confusing to me.
Yeah, and we had, and we wrestled with this, up here in the first statement, we had retailers, and the discussion was that the word "retailers" excluded business parks and other things because it's not an all-encompassing, and so that brought us back to this key development opportunities and using that term broadly.
So I, I actually, I agree with the mayor's interpretation. So I understand that from an industry standpoint, development covers it, but couldn't we have economic development? Because then I feel like it's a little more clear for the community. So just adding the word "economic," because I do agree retailers is too narrow, so I like development more, but I think economic development is clear. Could be a redevelopment opportunity where something new needs to be developed, could just be, we've got a building, let's get some, some jobs in it.
Now it is. Now it's on? I wanted you to put the goals, the, I wanted you to advance the slide so that we could get the goals up, yeah, as we were talking about them. If you'd put up F, that'd be great. Thank you. So, well, the goal statement changed slightly. Remember, if you will, back at the beginning, we talked about nimble and responsive. So the suggestion was to change the goal statement to, to add those words. So now says, "Provide nimble and responsive services to residential and business partners with fair, honest, and open governance through collaboration, innovation, and adherence to best practices." So the words were added to accommodate the, that idea. And then we made some tweaks to the key objectives. But before I go on, is that okay with everybody as far as the changes to, with those additions to the goal statement? Is that, okay? So the first key objective, originally, as you can see on the, on the board, on the, in the slide, said establish an organizational structure. So what we've got now is, the suggestion is, see, I can't even read my own writing. Oh, continue to follow the organizational structure that is consistent with the city charter. So that's a change for the first key objective. Are we okay with that? Okay. Second, we'll say, that was rewritten to suggest, "Conduct a seminar," I think, with, okay, we changed the beginning and the end. So, "Conduct a seminar with all elected officials and executive team to determine, clarify, memorialize, and promulgate," which is added, "roles and responsibilities, and communicate it to the public." So you've got some clarification there, and then at the beginning and the end. And the word "promulgate" was meant to be the, the sentiment that council, that this council approved as far as the roles and responsibilities. So that's a change to the second bullet. Is everybody okay with that? Okay? Then the, the, the fourth bullet moves over to C, which we'll talk about in a minute. And there was an addition that's suggested. And the, and if you recall, there was, there was a desire to talk more about transparency. So the addition that's suggested for a key objective is consistently explore opportunities for increased transparency. So how do you feel about that? Good? Okay. I hear no objectives and I see some thumbs up, so I'm going to assume that that's a good, that we're good to go on that. And those were the changes with F. Then, so one of those is moving to C. Well, the one that's moving to C, I should tell you, I should just reiterate that. Implement, and it's the, I'm sorry, develop a strategy for flexible work environments. The very, whatever it is on there. Oh, you already changed it. Okay, anyway, the, the flexible work environment goes over to C. And we have one change, well, the plant Moran, you all agreed on before, about that we're adding the words as agreed by city council. And so that's, those were, that was the only change to C, other than moving over the other bullet. And we did, the group did discuss whether or not, you know, there were too many, and it was decided that all of those in C help you be able to really implement the rest. And so although there are a lot in C, it was determined that that was appropriate. So I'm going to ask anybody else in the group if they want to say anything. Because I don't need to speak for everybody, but that's where we ended up. Okay. Well, I'll take a cleansing breath and let it out. Or maybe it's just me and Jacqueline that need to do that. Um, exactly. So is it possible that, is it possible that we're feeling good about this? I actually think what would be helpful is if we, if we do have, I think, we're going to, I'm going to reiterate the next steps, even though I think I may have said them more than once already. We will take the changes as you've approved them. And we will put this in a draft strategic plan document, using pictures, and thank you, I think maybe Jeff may have helped, he's not even there. Whoever sent us pictures, thank you. We'll, we'll pretty it up, we'll put this in a form that you can then see it, and you will not see any, you should, should not see any surprises. So then it will come to, it will be sent back to Gary, and, and then we're going to go from there. But you will, this will reflect council's priorities, the goals and the, the key objectives. And we will do that by the end of the month. We'll have that back to Gary, and sooner if we can. And then you'll get a chance, you know, before you approve it, then, then Gary will lay out the rest of the plan. So I think what would be really great is if we heard from, any closing remarks from each council member, and, and Gary, I don't know if you want to say some words about this or not, but we'll let the mayor go last, since you'll be able to close it out and then adjourn. I do want to thank everybody for your help today. I think that this was really, it was really helpful to get clarification that, that we needed, so that people do understand really what the words mean. I think that the very first time that we came together, there was a lot of discussion about that, well, what do these words mean? And I think that you've really come a long way as a council and with the help of staff in getting clarification on that, and I think that probably your staff understands a lot better about what your expectations are and what your hopes are for this strategic plan. So I'm going to stop talking, and Matt, you want to go first?
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to thank staff for preparing the, the draft document. I don't, I think that really helped us to be able to move the needle forward. I think if we, if we hadn't had that, it would have been a lot more difficult. And so thanks for the time that you all put into putting that together.
Then why don't we go ahead and start with Christine, and then we'll go around, around the room to the council members, and we'll end with the mayor, though.
Thanks, staff, and thank everybody for the time, and thank both you and Jacqueline for traveling down here during this crazy pandemic year, and, and I think we've made a lot of progress, and I'm looking forward to seeing the, the draft, and hopefully it's as we envision it and we can execute on it.
Great, thank you. Matt?
Thank you to management partners for facilitating this. Great job. Some at the beginning would have said that this was an impossible job. Y'all did it, so good work. I think coming away from this, for staff and myself, hopefully other council members, we have a roadmap that will guide us for the next five years as a city, guide our interaction with staff and citizens, and help make us a better government moving forward, coming out of this. I wish I had this three years ago when I got elected. I think over the last three years, we could have done a lot more. I thank the mayor and Gary for bringing forward this process to get us a strategic plan, and now it's up to us to follow the strategic plan on, with everything we agreed upon during the last three sessions. And hopefully we can do that, and it will lead us down the right road to further success in one of the greatest cities in America. So thank you.
Okay, great. Michael, please.
Excellent. So really appreciate all the time that everyone's put in from the mayor and council staff and our consultants, so thank you. Definitely some great dialogue. Something that's going to be important to me, I'm looking forward to seeing really that final draft. I'll certainly listen back to that first meeting that we had, but it'd be helpful if included with the final draft, if we're able to see again really the resident comments, really that resident survey, because what's, what's absolutely crucial to me as doing that final review is just making sure that, that the effort we're putting in and the priorities we're setting for, for staff and for our city are really lined up with, with really the, the citizens and, and really the feedback they gave us. So that'll just be something helpful for me, but again, thank you so much for, for this process.
Go ahead, Marie.
Thank you. First of all, thank you to management partners for the work that you've done and sitting down with us and staff and helping us collaborate here together. It's just, it's been great. We really appreciate the efforts you guys have, have given us, and to staff, for the homework that you've done to, to bring us this far and to give us something to work with. And then also, I just think it's great to be able to sit down with you all like this and hear from you one-on-one and work through some of these problems and initiatives together. I've enjoyed working with all the council members and the mayor as well, working through and talking through some of the, the possibilities. And I, in particular, have loved just imagining the possibilities that the community has and trying to put some steps together that we can help, can help improve and preserve and move the community forward. So thanks, everybody. Look forward to implementing the plan.
Thank you. Marcelle?
Thank you, all of you, for your time and your input.
Well, I will say that we, we're really pleased to be able to help, and we really appreciate the opportunity. Gary, do you want to say anything before the mayor?
I'll just thank everybody for their time, I mean, for, for, I'll speak for the executive team. I think for, for us, this is huge, being able to identify exactly what we're going to be working on over the next one to five years. A lot of the work that is to, that is still to be done is we can do that along with management partners working on the approval document. So myself, the executive team, and management partners will be working on the implementation plan. Our pre and Patrick will be working on the success measures, all concurrently, so we're hoping to get all of this done and to you in some form, you know, January, February, maybe the end of February, early March, if that's not too aggressive. But anyway, this, this to me is, is a big step for us, and I thank everybody for their time, and you all as well.
Right. And mayor?
I would like to thank everyone as well, and one thing I would like to do is kind of look around the room at a staff level and ask if you found attending these meetings helpful. Have you gained further insight into what your elected officials are thinking, where we're going, what we tend to agree on, what we tend to disagree on? Because I think that's very important as well. It's the communication at all levels in City Hall that is very important. One of the things, too, that I would like to say is, going into this process, there was a lot of fear on those part of electeds. It's the fear of the unknown, it's the fear of committing to something that you're not too sure about, it's the fear of someone misconstruing what your comments are or what your philosophy is. And to me, these three sessions have really brought us together, and I think that these three sessions that we attended and participated in were probably sometimes very difficult, sometimes very easy, but in the end, we all came together and, and were agreeing on something to move forward to the final document for the next five years. So I, I think this process alone has been extremely important for us, and I hope that staff found it helpful as well. So thank you all very much. I think this was well worth our time to participate in this, and I look forward to implementing the strategic plan. We've been talking about it for a while, but we're going to do it, so thank you all. And my hand goes out to you.